We're opening the meeting of the Town and Act and Planning Board on March 1, 2018. And the first order of business is a hearing on a change, proposed change to the Town and Act and Subdivision Regulations. And I guess we have two interested parties here. If you folks have had a chance to glance at that, or you are, or all of you, what we're proposing to bring to town meeting.
I'd be interested in the rationale.
So this wouldn't be town meeting, this is subdivision regulations that can be changed at regular board meetings. So currently there's a conflict between the zoning ordinance and the subdivision regs and state law. It was changed a few years ago that all lots count as a lot. Prior to that, lots greater than 40 acres were exempt. So we're just trying to align the, our zoning ordinance, subdivision regs, and state law all in line that a lot's a lot. We're not exempting greater than 40 acres.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any thoughts or questions later?
And one question. What do you call a division of two lots? If a subdivision is three lots, where someone had a piece of land that broke it up into two lots, is that a subdivision? Must you say that's a subdivision if you want to come out with another?
The division of the second lot would be three lots because you'd have the primary lot?
No, but if you had a piece of land and divided it into two lots, are you calling it a subdivision?
You have the mother lot and then you create a lot out of it? Is that what you're saying for two lots?
Yeah, because you're defining this subdivision as the creation of three lots. And so I'm saying what you call the creation of two lots.
Division of land. So I don't want to say you can circumvent subdivision, but state law allows you to the gifting lot. So if you hold the land for five years, you can break off a lot every five years and it doesn't go through subdivision review. You can gift a lot if you have a relative, direct blood relative, you can gift those lots and they don't even count as a lot. So you can do, say you have three kids, you've had the lot for five years, you can create your one lot that is counted a lot, and then you can give three to the kids all at the same time. You haven't even created a lot by definition, so you don't even need to go to subdivision at that point.
But in reality, isn't that a subdivision, huh?
No, that's a division of land. So the only thing we're changing is we're just striking out, this was boilerplate probably from Southern Maine, and they had this optional addition of definition. A lot of 40 acres or more shall not be counted as a lot. So we're making it clearer in the subdivision regs to line up with our zoning ordinance that if it's a 40, 60, 80 acre lot, it's still a lot.
Okay, so that hypothetically, if somebody had 60 acres and they divided two 20, uh, two 10s and then a 40, they're creating, that's still a subdivision. They can't, they can't convey that third 40 acre lot.
That would be the remaining, that would be the remaining land.
Is there a timeline on it? Five years or?
The five year clock only is used if you're avoiding subdivision planning board review. So if you just buy the lot today and you want to break it up into as many lots as you want, whether it's one or 20, you come through the planning board and have it done instantly. A lot of people think they have to wait five years to subdivide it, but as long as you want to go through the planning board process, you can subdivide it as soon as you want. It's the gifting and the avoiding subdivision is when you have to keep it the five years and then they have to keep it for five years before they sell it. Which, I don't know how the banks work with that. So if somebody gifted a lot and they just received it and they go get a mortgage on it, they have to hold it for five years before they can sell it. So I'm not sure how a mortgage would work on that if for some reason it goes into foreclosure.
Shouldn't some of that gifting terminology be in the subdivision?
That's all under state law. We just follow state law on that.
So if you read the subdivision without having the state law included, you could be confused.
That's that first, Title 30A, 4401, subsection four. It's right in that first heading. And it's the definition of subdivision is what we're just trying to align the state law with our subdivision regs with our zoning ordinance.
I think Joey's bringing up the same point I was talking to you before the meeting about, just a simple sentence following the citation of the statute.
But he's talking about the gifting and the five years and everything else. You were just talking about the 40 acres. I mean, there's three pages of exemptions under state law that we could move all into the subdivision regs, but...
But if someone were reading this, shouldn't that be all put together so that, you know, I don't know, I'm just, I'm just asking questions.
Then you wouldn't need me. It would be great if all our code was in one book. I mean, the building codes in six or so, but...
We enjoy asking you questions.
That's why we invite you too, for input, great input.
And then every time a book is updated, you have to update our...
Well, and it's, and that's why we're in this situation here is the state law got updated, we updated our zoning ordinance, but we didn't update our subdivision regs. And this was only brought to our attention with the subdivision on the corner of Milton Mills and 109. They did two 40 acre lots, an 80 acre lot, and a two acre lot. And it's all been for sale for several years and it really wasn't brought to our attention until somebody wanted to do something with it. So they broke it up on paper, never recorded any deeds because they didn't want to pay taxes on five lots, they just wanted to pay it on the one. Once it was getting sold, that's when we said, he hasn't held it for five years, he needs to go through subdivision. Which allowed the town to have some input on the division of land and the uses that were going to be created out there.
Okay, so in theory, you have the four lots down there. There's the two acre lot and you have the other ones. Do they have to wait 15 years to sell the rest?
Currently, that would be a subdivision, so any division after that would be a subdivision.
So then they'd come back to you?
Yeah, yeah, so they could do it the next step. And it just goes back through the, the engineering works already been done, the surveying work's done, so...
So in theory, what they were doing was circumventing the subdivision laws?
Technically, that's against the law if your intention is to circumvent.
No, where they weren't, they were...
They were using the law to their benefit, which, then the regulation, there's nothing wrong with that. But he was just, we've had in the past where somebody has done this three or four times and then during a title search on the second house, they realized they broke it off about a week too early, which means the whole thing now is illegal. And that becomes very difficult to navigate through. But it's their rights and to use the regulation to your benefit, there's nothing wrong with that.
Any more questions from you fellows? Number one. What's that? Number one. Joey, you want to say?
He's just getting warmed up.
He's thinking. We have, in reality, you had the Bill Hill, Ro Mac Ward, it was three pieces taken out of that. How did that, how did that end up?
You had, they were going to do a division of the land and then they realized somebody had done a division of land the year before, so the five years wasn't up, they had to come in for subdivision review.
Okay, so that went before subdivision?
Correct. The first lot got broken out of it on Darwin Road, so that wasn't part of the subdivision, but that starts the clock back over for the five year period. The five year period's a great tool to use for somebody with a lot of land. And if you go through subdivision, it's going to be expensive, the engineering, the cost for all that, so you're not just going to break up one or two lots, you're going to have to do five or six and pay for the road and all that. So if you could just break a lot off every five years, it gives the landowner some capital to work with and encourages them to keep the mother lot as tall as possible. And if you had to go through subdivision just for one lot, you'd do 14. Everybody does 14 because 15 is another level. So that's why we see a lot of 14 lot subdivisions in town.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Can we close the hearing then, you folks? Close the hearing, public hearing on the subdivision regs changes and open the regular meeting. We could restore our meeting minutes in our packets tonight, dated February 15. Joyce is voting tonight, is that right?
Maybe you have anything to add?
We have a couple of...
One cadet for Joyce. Joyce is the designated senior.
Senior.
I'll write down the home of the senior designated.
Elder is fine.
Careful.
That was the term.
A lot of seniors.
That's right. You've got to be careful and watch out for gray power.
Your time is coming.
I'm an AAAP member.
Motion.
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Second. Joyce wasn't here.
Right. Leslie seconded.
Yeah, Leslie seconded, he motioned.
All right, I'm an AAAP member.
I'll speak a little louder.
So we did second state law for March 15?
Yes. Yeah, 6 o'clock.
I was a little confused as to whether it was actually 7:00 or 8:00.
Me too, I wasn't sure if we told...
It was tentative when we did it and I can...
I just wasn't sure if we were, yeah, because there's snow on the ground, you know, I mean, if that's the suit we want to see.
Isn't it daylight saving sun anyway, right there?
Yes, I think I thought it was a 7:00 sunset then.
Yeah. Is that our next meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
So is it for 5:00 or 6:00?
5:00.
5:00.
Yeah, it's on the, it is on the agenda at the very bottom of the agenda.
Should we touch on the agenda?
Yeah.
Shall we try to get a vote then on the proposed changes to the additional dwelling units and vacant lots?
Yep, we'll move down to dwellings, I'll walk you through those again.
We just voted on those.
We just voted on those, yes.
I'm going to raise my hand just in case I didn't.
We did first and seconded.
Oh, yes, first and seconded, yes, that's right, too.
All in favor.
We have voted on the subdivision ordinance, have we not? Did we vote last time?
Yes, that was...
We closed the public hearing, we closed the public hearing, now we'll open it up and ready to vote on the subdivisional ordinance.
Discussion on that, anybody? The only point I'd make is I could still vote on, for clarity's sake, if there'd be a sentence toward the beginning of that entry, and you can put it in parentheses or brackets if you wanted to kind of clean it up a little bit, just saying, "A lot of 40 or more acres shall be counted as a lot for the purposes of this definition." Period. Unless you wanted to well hand that next phrase pertaining to the...
If we don't, doesn't, if we don't designate a certain amount, isn't it just automatically considered a lot?
That's what the definition has, it is a lot as a tract or parcel of land. So the ordinance is all set for that, it's just the subdivision regs had that optional definition.
So that is in the ordinance?
Under definition, it just says anything created is a lot.
So you want them to say, "A lot of 40 or more acres shall be..."
You're saying it's in the definition, second?
Up at the top.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's right on the top there.
Yeah. Well, that's the only amendment I'll suggest for the general public who's waiting through this stuff, who might set them on the right track right off the bat.
It would only be somebody that knew there's a 40 exemption lot. And it was, it was somewhat confusing, it probably changed about 10 years ago, that it was automatic and then state law changed it to the towns had to adopt it. And we never adopted it, so our ordinance changed with it, zoning ordinance changed with it, that the exemption was removed. So basically, a lot is anything that is parcel of land described on a deed, lot, a similar legal document. So it was exempted over 40 acres and now it's not on the zoning ordinance.
What is the color on the latest edition? Is it this teal?
No, yellow.
Yellow.
It'd be June 27.
I know you got it.
It's the gold.
Yeah.
Gold, oh, gold!
Gold.
You want to borrow mine?
I want it too.
It was, but it's a big one, 20 minutes.
Oh, yeah. This one you want to be on too?
It's a wrong, it's a two page, right?
27 is definition.
Yeah, 30, 30. What do you mean?
No, you're...
Is it, are you going on subdivision or...
I'm in zoning.
Zoning, okay. There you go.
Just to, just to wind that notion up, I'll just make a motion to suggest that a sentence should be added into the subdivision of the ordinance book under Article 3 definition, subdivision could be less sentence in parentheses, that would state, "A lot of 40 or more acres shall not be counted as a lot for the purposes of this definition." Period.
But we do want it to be, we want it to be counted.
Good. A lot of 40 or more acres shall be counted.
Shall be counted, too.
As a lot for the purposes of this definition. Period.
What was it that started this definition?
I know it's not necessary, but I just think it might be a little heavy.
You don't think that'll confuse some people? I mean, sometimes the more you give them, they...
It can create, the more you have, the more conflict you can create.
We have found a couple of people kind of looking for that loophole.
Yeah, yeah.
Looking for it, so if it says right there, we can do that.
Yeah, I think that if we, if you make any, you know, any reference to an amount, they're going to use that to, or they could use that to maneuver around it.
I think we'll just create more confusion. Because if you have, if you're saying that a lot, 40 acres or more shall be considered, then we would think like, what about if it's less than 40, then is it a lot considered? And we don't have any, right, and we don't have any other references to any size stating that size matters.
Let's take a quick vote on it, dispense with it.
Is there a second?
There is a second.
Guys feel like with a second? Fine.
Well, perhaps we could put a lot of, any size qualifies for this.
That's kind of how the definition is written, that a lot is, once you create it, it's a lot. Doesn't matter the size.
Size doesn't matter. Yeah, and we have a definition for lot, parcel of land described on a deed, lot, or similar legal document. What did you say? 27 is yellow? 27 is yellow.
Also, it's gold?
No, no, really don't. Gold is a subdivision.
That's very dogged. The alphabet of...
I'm doing a problem.
What is it saying? What is it saying?
Motion dies for the lack of a second, let's just dispense with that then, can we move to a vote, or is there more discussion needed on this? And we have a motion to accept the proposed wording as given to us in our packet today under the title, Article 3 definition.
So you need a motion to accept that?
Yeah.
I'll second.
Leslie, did you just wish?
I just seconded, yeah. You're the only one who made the motion. We are mongling, though, for your fairness.
Motion, I believe, Leslie seconded?
Yep.
To accept.
To accept, I agree.
So we're going to, or not?
All those in favor?
God, you guys are...
Yeah, you're going to...
You've got to vote on everything.
All those in favor, ask them. Yep.
Okay. Moving on then, to consider a proposed article about additional dwelling units.
So this would be probably slang, would be in our packets. So we looked at several different towns for the ADU units and a lot of them limited into strictly relatives of some kind or another. Most of them limited on the size or the percent of them. Some of them required that it couldn't be like a duplex. So we were trying to simplify it as best as practical. We don't want to have to go through and see who lives there. Some towns required the unit be removed once the people that were living there moved out. So the intention is, is that the parents coming back to live with the kids or the kids coming back with the parents. Eventually, somebody's going to move on and the unit's still there. I didn't think it was adequate enough to make the unit be removed. And we were trying to reduce it down from the regulations we have now, which is 50% of the road frontage and 50% of the lot size, you'd have to multiply by. We tried adjusting this 10, 12 years ago or so and we went with 200,000 square feet and 350 feet of road frontage and it's still too stringent. Everyone I've seen trying to use it, it hasn't been applicable to very many people. They've always had to try to buy road frontage from the NAD or come up with something. Most of them had the lot size, they just didn't have the road frontage. So looking at adding this would be, oh, let's see, D is the only thing we're changing on that, is allowing the one dwelling unit. We're adding the exception for an accessory dwelling unit under that. Currently, that paragraph was just hanging underneath the A, B, and C, and it should have had its own notation that it was all by itself. So if you come down to the land use chart, we were adding additional dwelling unit to it, it's all under reviews. Our thoughts were not to allow it in Resource Protection Shoreland Zone and the loss be district.
How does that be?
Most of the lot sizes are already maxed out down there, the pressure would already be, most of them are already non-conforming lots to begin with. And if we want something approved through Shoreland Zone, we'd have to go through the DEP to get it approved, and they're not going to allow it on a conforming lot, they're going to want an additional 20,000 or 30,000 square feet per dwelling unit. So our hopes were that the definition of an accessory dwelling unit is, it's an owner occupied one family building and this is inside of the existing one already. And the A would be, only one accessory dwelling unit located within the owner occupied single family dwelling shall be permitted. The lot in which the accessory dwelling unit is situated shall be, meet current dimensional requirements, so it's not on a non-conforming lot. The unit shall not be more than 800 square feet. A lot of towns restricted it to one bedroom. As I'm talking to some older people, they both have their own bedrooms because one has the CPAP machine, the other one snores, one has restless leg syndrome, so who cares how many bedrooms are in there, I guess, was our thought, because you're limited to the 800 square feet. And then the construction of it shall meet all applicable codes and standards. So you may have to upgrade the septic system, you may need to put a firewall in, smoke detectors, egress. So at least it's allowed by zoning, so now you just have to meet it through building codes. So we tried to keep it as simple as it was. A lot of them were no on-street parking, I didn't really think that would probably be an issue for us.
And then the wording in A, so you would, Danan owner occupied, so that is attached?
It's attached and the owner lives in the building. Whether he's in the apartment or he's in the house or she or we don't care, is how I looked at it.
But if it's like above the garage, right?
Is it attached?
And the garage is not attached.
Then that would not be an accessory dwelling unit, that would be two single family dwellings on one lot, which you'd have to have double the square footage. So the intention was, and we've heard it for years, the parents are getting old and they're moving back with the kids, or the kids can't make it on them, they're moving back with the parents, however the situation is. And a lot of people were just trying to add a little bit to their house to allow the family unit to continue. We just didn't want to track it down that it was still family orientated, we don't care. Maybe somebody wants to throw it on to be a caretaker to keep an eye on their parents because they live further away and they're just going to add a caretaker unit onto the house or something like that. So we tried to keep it as simple as practical, but we wanted to make sure, it just didn't become a two-family where somebody was, threw a unit on just to rent it out. And now they're renting both sides out or something.
So we don't care if there's no kitchen in this place, it all plus?
If there's, if that's the loophole we've been navigating people through, if there's no kitchen, it's just another bedroom. And if you can share the common, a lot of people don't want to share the common, they don't want to be a burden to the parents or the kids, so this would allow a second kitchen. So... So currently, if you didn't wanna put a kitchen, we don't care how many bedrooms your house is, your septic would match it up. The problem is, they want their own kitchen unit, and it's really hard to track down a kitchen, it used to be easy years ago, but now, a microwave, a hot plate, all you need is a sink.
And a wine fridge.
And a wine fridge, you're, you're in there. So the kitchens come as soon as we leave. And it's, it's, usually unfair to have two different standards, but if I see a high-end house on the lake with a kitchen in the basement, and a kitchen upstairs, the kitchen in the basement is, as they come off the lake, they're just utilizing the little night kitchen, versus I see a kitchen in the basement of a house off of one of the roads up, up in this area, it's got two-family written all over it. So this was the simplest way we looked, to allow the use on a conforming lot, the owner is there on one side or another. The eight hundred square feet was allowed if they had to do two bedrooms, or whatever, or just wanted some space.
Help me to decide what we're going to do on the land use chart pertaining to commercial ADU.
Um, what would we do? We throw it, threw it in as R, 'cause we did have a lot of residential dwellings already in A, B, and C. And most of the lots were conforming.
Would be an R underlined, is that correct?
Correct.
Any discussion? Motion to move this forward?
So. No, she, yes, she moved.
Any second?
A second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Okay, moving on to, uh, Dr. Pauline Bacon's law, again, if you want to do that.
Oh, yeah. I'm following you. So this section here says, at the beginning, if you have two non-conforming lots in the exact same ownership, him and her, both own, both of them, what's that color?
Yellow.
Yellow, very yellow. That automatically, they merge together. So, most people have already been aware of this, this has been here for years, that it's his lot, her lot, their lot, his lot, so they've already got it broken up. But what this is also allowing is this exception, and we tried tweaking it a couple of years ago, that if it was a lot twenty or thirty years ago, you haven't been paying taxes on it, but you had a deed saying it was a lot, you could pull the deed out from under your pillow and say, that was a lot, I wanna recreate the lot that was there. Which, I really don't have a problem with, if you called it a lot, we're paying taxes on it the past few years. And the problem we had with this was, the family owned it, it was still the same family, but the parents didn't own it, they put it into a trust for the kids, and the kids had it, and, um...
Was the trust paying for the, for paying the taxes?
Uh, it was in the trust name.
Yeah.
So, my thoughts were to just eliminate it, I, I, prevent it by the DEP, 'cause oddly enough, the only place that's allowed is the Shoreland Zone, which you would think it would be just the opposite, that you wouldn't see it as much. So when you see these dash lines here, these were a lot at one time or another. So this was two lots, somebody's bought them both, merged them together. This one would be qualified, because the regulations we put out a few years ago was a hundred feet on the water and twenty thousand square feet. This one was three lots that were perched, just, and moved together, merged together.
And all of them are straight past, too?
Yes. Uh, most of them were fifty by a hundred lots, that are getting up. It's twelve thousand square feet there.
Any, uh, any discussion or thoughts on this? Any cut, right, any, uh, we need some discussion? Ready for a vote? We have a motion to support this as written?
So moved. One second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Thank you.
I just wanna touch the timber harvesting ordinance again. What's your, what, oh, thank you.
She's on it.
She got my six. Talking with the state, they wanted us to get rid of everything in the ordinance, they wanted us to get rid of the heading, they wanted to get rid of the land use chart and everything. The problem on the land use chart, if it's not a permitted use, then it's prohibited. And they're like, well, if you have to, you have to. So, we're calling it a permitted use, the timber harvesting, we're getting rid of exception four, or note four, which, um, was the part we needed a forest of. Definition is the state's definition, they didn't want us to get rid of that, too. Uh, what we did add here was, all commercial timber harvesting shall be in accordance with the State of Maine's Timber Harvesting Regulations. And I think this line is the only thing we've changed since we had a vote from the board on the last time, and then the next five or six pages is just removing all the standards on how to cut timber, that'll all be through the state.
The state will cover all of that.
Yeah, I'm glad you liked us in the land use chart, if we're gonna do that.
Yeah, yeah, I thought so, too, and surprisingly, Maine Forest Service and the DEP were kind of both saying, get rid of it, everything, get everything possible, and that didn't make as much sense.
So, did we get a, a nod?
Uh, I hadn't talked to all of them, 'cause he's just the regional forester, I talked to the gentleman in charge of getting statewide standards. He was the one that wanted to get rid of the definition, and the, this heading, and the land use chart.
Yeah.
Was his, how he liked to see it, but he said, um, if the land use chart was gonna be a big deal for us, then he'd be okay with it.
Can we get that in writing?
No, it may not be when I go back, I don't know.
Yeah, it'll be nice to have it in writing. You have the email?
And, and, Steve has, has, uh, seen this...
The last thing we were working on was this little heading, and most of it is his wording.
He's happy with five point one nine.
Just that heading, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I think the concern we all had last time was that this option one, option two, forty percent basal area, wasn't going to be interpreted that it's all over town, really, that's just shoreland zoning regs. Which, the Forest Service doesn't use Resource Protection Shoreland Zones, they have just buffers around wetlands that are designated. Which makes no sense to me, but... Yes, we did, yeah, so we voted on everything, the only thing we changed was this, this, um, the five nineteen. Which really just says, any timber harvesting, stay in Maine.
Any further discussion? You wanna vote on the acceptance of that?
I would, yeah, we'll clean it up, and we'll have everything from today's date.
Yeah, we may have to vote again, but we might as well just move.
Any discussion? One second? We have a motion to approve as written? Just discuss it?
I have a motion to accept. One second.
All in favor? Isn't all that's preparation?
And now it's gonna get confusing, that was the easy stuff.
I did that one court thing, I noticed it's really not huge, but in the, the little book, this little key we have, any use not listed here is prohibited, and then C, LPI, and...
A lot of it got, uh, dropped off.
It's not in, it's not in the gold book, so maybe this June, when we print it again, we'll...
It will be in the next year.
Yeah.
It's on a master copy, but when these first got printed, it got dropped off.
Do you think it's on the internet?
It is on the internet.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I was just wondering, 'cause I was like, you know, you're looking through it, and you're like, oh, I didn't ask what it is.
I had to go check it, too.
Okay, yeah.
So, we're losing, is that also a little?
We're in, we're in green, we've moved to green.
We've moved to green.
All right, so, discussing the mineral extractive industry with the town attorney, he has kind of pointed out that it's been misinterpreted for the last, I've been here for twenty years, and he was explaining to me how to interpret it. And it maybe wasn't the intent of it, but it's horribly written, and how it's written is how it's written, so that's how you're supposed to interpret it. So, this is the current ordinance here, permits required for the topsoil, um, rock gravel fifty-three?
Strongly fifty-three.
Yep. So it talks when a permit's required, uh, may be removed from locations where a permit, permitted only after a conditional use for such operations has been issued by the plane of wood, blah, 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 blah. And then it talks about this earthmoving not requiring a conditional use. These are our exceptions, the following earthmoving activities shall be allowed without a conditional use for it. And if you go down, number one, accepting the Shoreland Resource Protection, a removal or transfer of less than ten thousand cubic yards of material from or on any lot in a twelve-month period, so, earthmoving activities, you gotta think of that. Uh, the removal or transfer of material incidental to a construction site, grading, landscaping, and such, um... Alteration of public-private roads, agricultural, so he's looking at these through here of, this is filling, moving, and earthmoving activities. A gravel pit is not filling, grading, earthmoving activities, it's, um, a mineral extractive industry, is how they're looking at it. So this exception should not be applied towards gravel pits. So, I've been here twenty years, and that's how I was told when I came in, is that that is, that, well, that was the intention of this. And they're saying, is interpretation, it's, that's not earthmoving, these three are earthmoving activities, or if you're regrading the area for, um, golf course, orchards, things like that, that's earthmoving activity. A gravel pit is mineral extractive industry, that should be up under A. So looking at it... So, and, we just put this together over the last couple of days, and looking for the board's input, obviously. First we put in was a filling grade, a definition for filling, grading, earthmoving activity, um, earthmoving activity other than a mineral extraction. So that's really telling us what this is, it's anything but the mineral extraction. And we've got the land use chart there, if you look at the land use chart, there's two areas that have the ten thousand on it. Uh, I think it's the fourth and the fifth one down.
Sand and dirt as well.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
And there's two areas that have the ten thousand on there. And they both say filling and grading, but the second one has mineral extraction industrial and warranties.
Right, yeah, I remember looking at this...
And being confused.
Languished dealing with peppin, I'm trying to, and like, this other verbage was not helping us.
No.
Or what helped me anyway.
So, I guess the good thing is, when you're looking at those two ten thousands, you go across, the N's and the Cs all line up, so it's still the same, no matter what.
Right.
But at least trying to define it, if it's a pit, it's a pit. So, our thoughts were, on that last one, get rid of this filling and grading and all that, it's mineral extractive industry. And then, take that exception one, under earthmoving, and move it up under A, where the permits required for a pit. So then you can add that exception to it, the controversial part is going to be, do we stick it to ten thousand? Do we drop it down to a thousand, is it something in between? Um, 'cause, you know, discussing it back and forth with the attorneys, he's under the impression that ten thousand yards, if you lived next to a place where there's ten thousand yards a year coming out of it, you couldn't imagine, that was the theory when they put this together, that they would want ten thousand yards coming out of a site a year, unregulated. No hours of operation, you, so there's no incentive for somebody to come in and get a conditional use permit to run a pit. I can't track the ten thousand yards, there's no hours of operation, you're not restricting the crusher, um, it's totally unregulated. There's no reclamation plan, there's no bond.
No.
There's nothing.
There's nothing.
How many truckloads, is that a thousand?
How big of a truck? So if a ten, just call a ten-wheel at ten yards...
Ten, you're a truck, ten thousand?
Well, if you were, if you were at a thousand, and...
Let's go for the...
For the ten thousand.
For the ten thousand.
Then you're at a thousand truckloads.
You're at a thousand truckloads.
Well, if it's a three, six, three hundred and sixty-five days, you can spread it out that way, but you can assume, they're probably not working Saturday and Sunday. They're not gonna work December, January, February, March, April. So...
They were working last month.
Well, the roads are posted, so they shouldn't be on the roads now.
Right, I was just thinking, some certain spots, yeah.
There are a few of the ten thousand pits, ten thousand yard pits, that the people are very respective of the neighbors, they are reclaiming as they go through, um...
How many do you think we have in town?
There's a lot of vacant ones, that just all of a sudden stop back up. I'd say there's three or four, that they come in, grab a little bit of rock out of it every year, and one owner may have two or three, and they're very respective of the people and the owners. But a lot of them, there's not much reclaiming going on.
You're left with stars all over the place.
The state isn't going to care until you've got five acres actively open, ten acres full of it, of it, and, and going. The thousand to ten thousand, that's going to be the only, I think, controversial issue of all this. But, it's always been confusing, somewhat, the earthmoving, the ten thousand, we had the two lines in there, and it kind of did make sense, after we kicked it to death, to take this, move it up, put it under what it is, it's an extractive industry, it's a pit. We're not regrading the site for whatever. Uh, we've got one of our old scars that somebody's finally bought. He's building a house and they're going in and they're gonna, as much as he can afford, try to reclaim it. Um, the worst part is, how do you come up with all that topsoil? You know, to, to do, you can regrade it fairly easy and bury the rocks, rocks and get some slopes going, but to come up with the topsoil would be astronomical.
Where, where is that exactly, you say?
Uh, the one that's being regraded now is Lakeside and Redgate. Somebody just purchased that one going in there outside.
But, but even if they, you know, bring it back, I mean, we've had one on Main Street, and while it's beautiful, Christmas trees are there. That, that's not a natural main, uh, you know...
For the revegetation.
For the revegetation. I mean, it, it's all blue spruce maybe?
Yeah.
Yeah, blue spruce. I mean, there aren't any other blue spruce around us, but we have these, I mean, I'm very glad, I'm very... Yeah, just before, I mean, I'm very glad that there was some revegetation done, but...
Is that where you get your Christmas tree every year?
About midnight on the twenty-third.
Did you replant it with a white pine?
I, I, I go in there with a white pine, you know, maybe a blueberry bush.
Could you spell your last name for the kids?
It's okay. This gentleman knows we have trucks to do it, so I feel comfortable.
So...
But I, thinking of the other things that, that these truckloads, I mean, before you just said, if, if we, let's say we cut down the time that they can be working to five months and take out the holidays and the weekends, so now they've got maybe four months where they can actually work. Again, I can only reference my own road and how, how I get there. That road's not gonna take that kind of beating all the time. I mean, it's bad enough every spring with frosty and everything else.
At least it's a town road.
But, well, I'm very, I'm very lucky. It is a town road. But if it wasn't a town road, I mean, I hate, I hate to think about what people would be, you know, dealing with. And especially if it was a private road and somehow, you know, how regrading comes out of their own pockets. Uh, I think it's, it's, um, kind of an environmental mess.
Ken, on page two of this, um, under the citation five nine two, um... A one, excepting shoreline district and resource protection district, the removal or transfer of less than one thousand cubic yards.
In twelve-month period.
Do you need a less than or equal to, or just less than suffices, I guess?
Which in reality, by the time I've seen enough activity to say, oh, you've been a thousand, you're probably a two thousand. Um, a ten thousand yard hole would probably be a hundred by a hundred by thirty feet deep.
So, just, just walk me through this five point nine point two one more time, Ken. It says, there's a permit required, but then it says number one, excepting the shoreline and resource protection district, removal or transfer of less than one thousand cubic yards of material. Is that saying it doesn't require a permit?
That the exception does not, that you would need the permit in there.
You would need the permit or you would not?
You would.
You would, 'cause when you look at the land use chart,
Yeah.
it's a conditional use permit. Um, if it's one hundred to five hundred cubic yards is conditional use and five hundred to, uh, to, uh...
That's filling or grading.
Oh, wait, wait.
So you wanna go down to the last one, where we're gonna strike out the filling or grading and call it where it's under parentheses, extractive industry? Yeah, it's... And that's why when we were looking at this, it's like, it's, uh, page sixteen?
Yeah, seems, page sixteen. Oh, it just got it as non-permitted to the mineral extraction industrial. We're only talking about industrial.
And that's the confusion part. We've always allowed this.
Yeah, just right above it. Though I did just notice right above it.
That would be the...
It says five hundred to nine.
That's the very first one.
Yeah.
So that's filling or grading. That's, you're, for whatever reason, you've gotta reslip, redo your whole slope.
Yeah.
What we really wanna do is, it's a gravel pit, it's a gravel pit. This has been in parentheses underneath that.
Right.
But it's been buried underneath the first twelve letters, twelve words. So what that verbiage was saying is the exception would not apply in shoreline resource protection of the law speed. Which that's no change. All we're doing, changing that land use is getting rid of the confusion, filling and grading and earth moving. It's extreme. That's why we tried to kick it around and...
I mean, that's, yeah.
It's not even really a full sentence though, actually.
Which, the new definition?
Yeah, under the A one. So the removal or transfer of less than one thousand cubic yards of material from or onto any lot in any twelve-month period is permitted without a permit?
It's not a permitted use in those.
Right.
No, but except in the shoreline.
Would accept this?
So you're crossing sort of a rate shoreline and resource protection, but you're saying, and so in the, in other areas, it is permitted, right?
The exception would apply.
Would apply to?
That, the exception being that you don't need a permit.
No, the exception being that you cannot remove less than...
And that paragraph's probably been in the ordinance long enough that maybe it was a permitted use in shoreline and RP at one time? No, never has?
Not since, um, complaining.
The last version of it?
Yeah.
'Cause this, like I said, I don't think we've touched it in the twenty years that I've been here.
But, Leslie, does it, you look, does that make sense to you?
Yeah.
No, I'm still mulling it over too.
So you need a permit. A says you need a permit.
A says you need a permit.
Permit required, big bold words.
Yep.
Yeah, for any type of mineral extractive industry, you need a permit.
I, I think that the, the part that's confusing is you took, you took a phrase that was under, be, not requiring a permit.
Right.
And you moved it up to where permit is required, but the verbiage is the same.
Yeah.
And so I think that's where the confusion is.
Exactly.
What if you got rid of that, uh, excepting the shoreline zone resource protection? So the par, so that, so it would read, the removal or transfer of less than a thousand cubic yards of materials from or onto a lot in twelve-month period? 'Cause it's already not allowed in that area.
But that, that's still, you're removing something that didn't require a permit to...
Is now required.
Where it is now required on permit. Do we want a permit for less than a thousand cubic yards?
I wouldn't think so.
So...
Well, and...
It shouldn't be in that, under the, the, the...
Under permit required.
So leave the word except, except for removal or transfer of less than a thousand.
Right.
So does that read better?
Might be good to leave that initial clause, excepting the shoreline district and resource protection district.
Oh, I can't place it back in.
But, um, no, we're on the end.
Put it on the end.
Well, it's already in the land use chart.
That is not permitted. No.
The text confirms it.
But you also have to have village area and law speed in there too.
So basically, you're saying, you're saying that any, it, you need a permit for any moving of soil.
Except for a thousand yards.
Up to.
Up to.
Up to a thousand.
Unless you're in shoreline, law speed or whatever.
Village area.
That was kinda why we wouldn't allow it in the village. Well, I guess we didn't want a hole around here. The trucks are driving by our house anyways. So it's not allowed in village. It's not allowed in resource, shoreline and law speed.
Right.
I told you this was the confusion part. But I think by removing that, it makes more sense. Maybe I need to put that and set that up.
Well, I'm just talking about, does it make any more sense to leave the first clause, excepting the shoreline district and RP district, and leave it, tack that onto the end instead?
We'd have to add village in there too as well, if we're trying to make it consistent with the land use chart. Where it ended in the land use chart or something.
Yeah, I mean, unless you put...
Let's just do that. Except where indicated, except where indicated in the land use chart, yeah.
Yeah. What if you put permit required for over one thousand cubic yards annually done out of that lot? And got rid of the exception. So if it's over a thousand, you need a permit, which says if it's under a thousand, you don't?
Except in the shoreline.
But the land use chart says, is that the land?
Yeah, the land, except in the...
So if you were to change something in the future, you'd just change the land use chart. That's one of the problems we have. Is we change the chart, but then it's in the ordinance in three or four places, and we only change it in two or three, and then there's one, and then we end up with a conflict.
See, the thing you could write is, in accordance with the land use chart. I mean, if you, further down the road, if you change the land use chart, it's, you're covered, you're covered.
Makes sense, yeah.
Everything refers back to the land use chart. Dwelling units, um, permit, all the permitted uses go back to the land use chart.
Do we, do we need number one at all, or if we just got rid of that, except permit required and those?
If you look at the definition for extractive industry, it's anything over a hundred, a hundred cubic yards.
Okay, so we want it to be...
Going from ten thousand to one thousand is going to be a huge step. Going from ten thousand to a hundred would be...
Huge.
We wouldn't wanna lose it for that.
Set up the stocks.
I did invite the gentleman that invented dirt tonight, and he's been very quiet. He hasn't seen the final rendition of it, but...
Well, let me ask you, what are you gonna do about drilling and blasting?
That's, that's part of it, 'cause rock...
I don't see it on the, on your...
Topsoil or rock, right?
I, I would, if you're gonna be that technical, I would go into using the word ledge.
So add, uh, topsoil, rock, ledge.
Well, yeah, like, you, you, you're drilling and blasting ledge.
Yeah.
Or rock, where aside you could take a, um, a hammer off a hydraulic, uh, hammer and crack it. It varies, it makes noise, but drilling and blasting is a, it's a, it's a whole procedure.
Because you're gonna crush that too.
Well, the problem is you're gonna get all different sizes, so you're gonna have to do something to it. Because the way you read that now, it's like, where is, where is your rules and regulations as far as, uh, uh, quarry? Is a quarry ever mentioned anywhere in there?
Rock.
Oh, it'd be mineral extractive industry, it would be a quarry.
You need, you need the word ledge in there, Jones, that's the idea?
It's not a bad idea to add it in, because, um, rock could be just...
You're terrifying it.
A rock is not attached to the earth. It's loose in the gravel versus the ledge is attached.
Well, it depends on how you interpret it. If you use the word rock, comma, ledge, if you understand what I'm saying too, then you have, you have it defined, you know, it's like a...
We had in ledge, better?
Yes, Joe, yeah.
And what do you, let's, let's get this off the ground here. What do you wanna do with that, um, five nine two A one? Wanna configure that, um, the exception clause, or what are you gonna do with that? Or is Don, um, suggesting to say, according to the land use chart?
I mean, it pretty much, I think under permit required, it pretty much covers it, uh, 'cause it says, only after conditional use permit for such operations has been issued by the plan, or in accordance with the following provisions of the ordinance, pretty much covers the land use chart everything.
Yeah.
So I...
But I have to see the...
But then when you cover number one, it confuses me. Oh, 'cause when the, when the, the people come to us for a conditional use permit, you can ask them what they're doing and and that would all come forth at that time. I'm, I'm not sure.
So, yeah, what are you saying? Strike the first clause?
'Cause I'm just trying to find the, how number one benefits as, as opposed to confusing us.
Well, it's got the citation of the amount. That's, that's the key thing.
Because the definition, if you look under the definitions for mineral extractive, is, um, a hundred. So once you remove a hundred yards, then you're a pit.
It's a number one.
Can we change the definition to a thousand?
And get rid of one altogether then?
Would that be less than a... So we get rid of filling, grading, another earth moving activity, so one...
Well, see, no, we definitely, see, that's where we're getting to.
Well, yeah, that's what I'm...
You're up at the top.
That's what I'm asking.
No, we ignore that, 'cause that's someone else.
Okay.
We're down here for this, mineral extraction industrial. We have to focus on this one.
This one, yeah.
This one here confuses us.
It does.
But it's a...
Where's your book?
Make sure they're there. Page sixteen. So, Ken, these, these other ones are for like, homeowners or whatever, right?
Exactly. That doesn't answer, homeowner, that's a...
I got, I got something that you want to hear. Just, let's, let's make a motion and move this one. Five nine two A one.
There's nothing here that says a thousand.
What about, uh, in accordance with the land use chart, comma, removal or transfer?
Yeah, I think we should make it as simple as...
In accordance...
Because this is getting the, except the exemption, people that make, in the background, you know?
So it's a, not in accordance.
And you know, like, everyone's on in those districts. So that if it's allowed, and allowed in this district or something.
Right.
So what he's saying was, you don't, you don't put back the land chart. Anyway, for that, to have it applied in the land chart, but, yeah, it would be nice to spell it out there too.
So this is...
The tactics is pretty much all the information.
Yeah, so like, give them all, except, I mean, that, that would be...
Yes, or, or in the areas that are permitted. Cause it's all four of the, we didn't wanna make it clear these four areas.
Right.
You can't really announce it.
Right.
So if we put it on the end, you think that would clear it out?
But, but we need, we need to list all four districts.
We have to list the four areas.
Yeah, or put...
Land use chart.
Yeah, one, yeah.
We're permitted to the land use chart.
We're starting at the land use chart, it'd be easier.
We're turning it to land use chart would be the easiest way.
Yeah.
And the less confusing way.
So Tom just motioned to, to write.
But nobody listened to it.
I said, I have motion, Tom. I'd like to hear it again.
I wrote it out, Tom.
In accordance with the land use chart?
Yeah.
In accordance with the land use chart, comma.
The removal or transfer.
The removal.
Or transfer.
Or transfer of less than 1,000 cubic yards of material from or onto any lot.
So you put that in the beginning of it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
In accordance with the.
Instead, except for the removal.
I kind of like it at the end because.
In accordance with the land use chart.
And then it's, it's, it's like, you see that right at the beginning, if you.
Right, but in the land use chart, it doesn't have anything about the 1,000, so I think it's.
Yes, see, that's, it does, it does, when you look at, um.
We're striking that out.
Just this part here. Yeah, the text, there's 10,000.
That's where the 10,000 part is.
So everything stays on the land use chart except for it says filling and grading blah, blah, blah. The mineral extraction industry stays. So then that makes that chart much more understanding. So that'll be the only thing that stays.
But there's not anything on the land use chart that says 1,000, we got anything? How do we get that to a front and center?
So we gotta have that spelled out in this part, like here.
Yeah, right where it is, right there.
Okay. But what, but I think what Tom was saying is, is to take this clause here and, and in accordance with the land use chart and then put the removal of.
Right.
And then about, rather than accordance, what about like where permitted? Because we want to spell out, there's four areas where it's not permitted.
Well, they have to know it's the land use chart.
He's trying.
No, but he only refers you to the chart.
Right.
Where you remove the chart and you'll see that it's not permitted in those areas.
Right, but I'm saying, but it doesn't really, um, spell out that you're permitting.
Make a motion, let's move, move along. Make a motion.
I thought you already did.
You did.
Was it accepted?
Yeah.
All right.
Didn't you?
It wasn't counted on.
And, oh, a second, we're just talking about it right now.
We're, we're in discussions.
We're in discussions.
Do you want to read the motion or, or the motion on time and then roll over on it?
Uh, this was in reference to 592A1. The amendment would be in accordance with the land use chart, comma, the removal or transfer of less than 10, 1,000 cubic yards.
Yeah, I would like to have something in there about like where it's permitted on the land use chart or like.
Well.
So I'm trying to figure out.
Almost, let's, let's get rid of this motion and move it forward. Almost in favor of that, the motion?
Can I have a bow, can I have a discussion? It's too complicated.
Okay.
What about changing the 100 to 1,000 in definitions? Would that do what you're trying to do?
Oh, my.
What page do you want to go to?
29. Any operation with a 12 month period removes more than 100 cubic yards of soil, topsoil, boom, sand, gravel, clay, rock, sheet or other similar materials from a natural location and transport the product removed away from excavation site. We probably want to slip the word ledge in there.
And, John, what is the definition of, what is the word you define it?
Mineral extraction. 29 for most of us.
Yes.
I don't know, I, I kind of like the 100 because then we won't have people saying, oh, I'm just gonna grab a little bit of this other substrate over here that I need to mix in with it.
What's really odd is the mineral exploration, which is the definition above, which is just digging a little hole here and there, that needs a permit.
Oh, I'm going for it.
I'm not allowed.
And nobody's having a permit for mineral exploration.
Well, yeah, I know, 100 cubic yards and sometimes they dig a lot of wells in those places too.
But really, so we would have to add the word ledge in that.
I do like that, yeah. Topsoil, sand and gravel, right after rock again.
Yeah. So we add ledge, maybe being on the. I was gonna say, I think you're on the website.
Yeah.
Still trying.
You're making me a little nervous.
You'll be changing it. Done. Don't have to retype it enough, it's done. Print it.
As Tom would say, so moving this forward.
I like Tom's idea because we want to incorporate two more districts, not just shoreline and resource protection, those aren't the only districts returning corporate.
Right, but, but that's what.
So we do want to change somehow, go in the land use chart. I thought, I thought we were very close with Tom's side.
Well, and I think, I, I agree with what, what Tom said, I believe that's all that's necessary. I mean, it's a referral to.
Tom would like to find out who's in favor.
The chart.
You're gonna refer to yourself.
Read, read, read word the, how, how it would read.
592A1.
Yeah.
In accordance with the land use chart, comma, the removal or transfer of less than 1,000 cubic yards, et cetera.
So you're leaving out except? How do you know that's an exception if you leave out the word except?
Because you're, it's referring you to the land use chart, but it tells you, you can't do it in those areas.
Right.
But it doesn't become an exception.
It's not an exception.
Yeah. No, so you're trying to accept the first 1,000 yards.
Really, you're gonna, surely you should read the end.
Well, what, what would happen, Tom, if we put?
I agree with Yoli, except.
If we put that.
In accordance with land use chart.
Hmm. Except in accordance with the land use.
No, no. Just how it's written now.
No, and at the end.
In accordance with land use chart.
In accordance.
We're permitted in the land use chart.
After the 100.
Oh, that's okay.
I have a permit.
That's good, there we go.
Give, give that back to Don and somebody please.
Is it devil wage?
Yoli, can you?
Uh, where, yeah, where, we're, we're just, he's, he's writing it up on there. Yeah, I just got it.
So, but do we want to vote down the last motion so we can go?
Just amend, just amend it.
I'll make one there.
Yeah.
Okay, so down here, second, we can move to.
Tom, I'd like to make a motion, we permit the last motion. To read.
Because you're from here. It's close to me. To read.
To read, except, uh, to 591. 592.
A.
A1. Except the removal or transfer of less than 1,000 cubic.
What does that?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's of, uh, mineral from or onto any lot in any 12 month period where permitted in the land use chart.
Breaks my heart. That's terrible.
And then in definitions for mineral extraction, we'll bring the word ledge into that as well, so.
That doesn't make, I'm sorry, but that doesn't make any sense. That's worse than anything that's.
You wanna call that again?
I thought, I thought I called it here and.
Call it there, yeah. A comma abdues after, a comma after period.
Now Woodsmith is coming home today.
Oh, yeah.
Or would, would you want a colon after except, except for this? Is that what we're saying?
You're semi-colon.
Semi-colon, it's anything.
Semi-colon.
What if you put exception, colon?
Yeah, yeah.
Shit, now you have some.
Because when you have except, that's like.
Yeah, that's true, actually, exception?
Exception, colon, and then
except, colon, except, colon. Exception. Yep. I'm going to turn to her.
For Tom.
As permitted in the land use chart. Ooh. That's what?
As permitted.
They changed it to a colon in there because you got a capital.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, well, we'll fix the.
Fix the grammar?
Yeah, we'll fix some of the grammar things tomorrow.
Yeah, just watching, Tom.
Is that better, Tom?
No, I don't. Take a moment, make a moment.
What's your, what's your objection?
Yeah, what's your objection?
It doesn't flow good.
It doesn't flow good. The exception, it would, in my mind, need an immediate clarification, it's not there. It has no reference to any zoning districts or, um, nothing that's in the land use chart.
Right, well, the exception is about 1,000, it would be less than 1,000, yeah.
Yeah, the exception is about.
The first thousand's right.
The first thousand in the reference is the land use chart. And then the reference is the land use chart.
Yeah.
Make a motion, somebody.
I think she did, right?
Joyce.
I did. She needs a second. I need a second.
Or actually, you already.
Well, sorry.
Leslie said.
Leslie said.
Yeah, you just need something in the minutes.
Yeah.
His system is easier for you to record, you know, who's second and.
And you go, Joyce, Leslie, Leslie.
We'll miss Nancy when we need her.
Oh, yeah, we need Nancy.
So you're gonna tack that on, that last clause?
Yeah. So you're gonna remove.
Almost in favor?
In favor.
Okay. Just remember we already added that word ledge in the definitions.
Yes, I wrote that in here also.
We'll clean it up tomorrow and send it out.
So we'll get a note here sometime soon as to, um, public hearing speakers.
Uh, first week in April.
For all.
Yeah.
Four weeks upstate.
And then we'll have Bob back to take you off the hot seat.
Geez.
Uh, you guys should have the packages from Monarch. I haven't got a chance to get in and do a, uh, a review of them yet, but I discussed the packages.
Do you want to, we'll review that at our next meeting?
Yeah.
Thank you, Ken.
Yoli, if you want to get together, we can do a individual site walk down to the pit or something too. They have eight hot hats waiting for us.
We're gonna be, we're gonna have them operating the crusher at that time?
That'd be my assumption.
But they'd also be operating the loader and, and they have a team where they're idling.
Probably not.
You get all the operations down, it's gonna be more than just the crusher going on.
So if you had a bunch of things that were 10 decibels, say three things that were 10 decibels, is that 30 decibels or would it be 10 decibels? I don't think it.
It depends where you're standing.
Yeah. 10 would be 10?
Yeah, but.
If you had, if you had the stereo, the chains are on the lawnmower and they were all 10, you'd just hear 10 decibels, not 30, right? My coordinator is in Colorado, so I gotta wait for him to get back.
Is that what they're telling you, Ken?
No, that was a question, that was.
I think, I think 10, 10 is sending remains 10, but.
Believe me, it's louder than the tractor idling, you know, using the chainsaw and just.
And you have radio, you have.
It's definitely louder than. I don't know about the decibel, the decibel reading might be the same for five nine.
But it's loud.
But it feels louder.
Sure.
The vibration.
So actually, it would be helpful for me to go at a different time.
And it's probably exponential.
It'd be really.
Well, it'd be boring again, we certainly want to get it on.
Can we have a motion adjourned?
Move to adjourn.